President of the Mawa Education Association. And we've put on a PowerPoint tonight, invited everyone in to inform the public of the MAA's current contract negotiations and the issues affecting schools. This is Andy Futel, and he's one of our vice presidents, and he's really going to be running and chatting with it. Andy?
Thanks so much for being here. Again, we hope to kind of provide more of a complete picture about what's going on in the schools, and hopefully through support, we can kind of improve the state of affairs here in Mawa. So, to start, we just want to say this is a wonderful school district. We are really, really proud of working in this school district. About a month ago, the board presented recent academic results of state testing, graduation rates of the senior class, and I mean, it's off the charts. In every tested grade level in math and language arts, Mawa students are exceeding the state averages, and by a wide margin. And in many cases, exceeding our DFG, which is our local comparable school districts. So, the school districts have similar socioeconomics and demographics. And so, we're doing really, really well on this kind of standardized measure. And then, the graduation rate, again, well above the state average, and our students are going to top colleges all across the country. And, you know, we take great pride in this, in this success of our students. We've dedicated our careers to working here in Mawa, to improving the quality of the education we provide for the children here. And, you know, we give a lot of our own money to the, to the students as well. As an MAA, I've contributed quite a lot in charities and our philanthropies, in the schools foundation, we donate quite a bit, as well as our scholarship fund to students. So, I kind of share all that because it kind of puts in context a little bit about some of the changes that concern us so much. Over the last few years, we've seen a number of changes at both the state and local level that have resulted in lower morale for the staff, generally a contentious relationship between the association and the Board of Ed, the current Board of Ed, and increased financial hardship for our members, kind of losing more take-home pay each year due to some of the things we'll explain, and increasingly, over the last few years, and particularly this past year, more and more staff leaving to go to other districts, and really quality people. So, some of the non-financial things that concern us are generally a lack of teacher input in various things going on in the district, and generally not being treated as we feel we should as professionals. So, one thing in particular, professional development, this is, those of you who aren't familiar with education, basically, our opportunity to better ourselves as educators. Now, teachers do this all the time, you know, in our own independent readings and graduate courses we take and on and on, but the district also provides professional development coordinated for us, and we have built-in professional development days. We have very little, if any, input into that, though. Tons of research shows over and over that the more teachers buy in to professional development, the more effective it's going to be. And we feel like this is a really simple thing, that if given the voice and the process to say, hey, we would like, this is a concern for us, we'd like to learn more about this, or kind of differentiate that professional development a bit more than it currently is. You know, same thing, we did a technology initiative that we started at the middle school last year. There were 15 of us who were part of a pilot group. I was one of those 15. And I was really hopeful that, you know, we'd have a voice in kind of the direction that technology's going. We kind of recognized as a district, we're a little behind compared to some of the other schools in the technological hardware and, you know, resources that we have. So, I was all in, I was like, great, let's, let's do this. And through the year, it kind of felt like the decisions had already been made, that things were going to be moving forward regardless of our input. I actually spoke about this at the last board meeting, and I was pleased to hear that, you know, Central Office Administrators, Board seemed receptive to some of these changes. And I'm hopeful that we will see a change. They talked a little bit about kind of teachers having more to say in PD and starting to differentiate a little bit and addressing some of the technology issues that we've seen. We haven't seen too many of those changes yet, but again, that was in their defense, it was only about, you know, a few weeks ago. So, we're hopeful that, you know, they'll back up those words with actions, but to this point, we really haven't felt like we've been part of this process. And again, we feel like we should all be on the same page, kind of working towards the same goal. Same thing, we have a new evaluation system, relatively new, in the state of New Jersey. There's a state mandated kind of process for evaluating that evaluation process, but there are a lot of things where we feel like we could have more of a voice in that process. The state made a change to it that if you were deemed highly effective, which is the highest rating a teacher can get, that you can opt for an alternative, alternative measure of getting evaluated. And as a highly effective teacher, I was like, yeah, that'd be great. I would love to kind of really explore some specific aspects of my teaching that I could kind of better myself on. And we weren't given the choice to do that. It was kind of deemed by Central Office, no, no, that'd be too complicated and, and too much work for the teachers and supervisors, that we're just going to stick with what, what we have. Okay, but again, whether that's true or not, I would like to have a voice in that process. And so, those are kind of the things we're talking about. Similarly, we're going to talk about some of the financial constraints on teachers. And it's important to point out that a lot of this stuff is statewide. Really, starting back in 2010, second year of the Christie administration, there were a number of changes that were meant, in theory, to kind of constrain property tax increases by addressing and, I don't know how to say it perfectly, but essentially trying to limit the amount of money that teachers can make by addressing the amount taxes can be raised. So, that was the property tax revenue increase cap. This has been confused by some members of the board as a salary cap. It is not that. It is a property tax revenue increase cap. Similarly, the big hit for us was in 2011, the Chapter 78 law. This is the Health and Benefits Reform Law. And again, what it basically said was there were top-down mandates, top-down changes to what had historically been a locally collectively bargained process. And so, for years, we as an association got to negotiate with the board and say, all right, well, we will take lower salaries in exchange for, you know, benefits that we don't have to pay into. The state said, no, no, for the next four years, everyone has to pay into their health benefits on an increasing, you know, scale. But, at the end of those four years, locals can negotiate again. And that's kind of, we'll speak more about that. That's kind of where we're at now. It also led to increases in our budget contributions. Similarly, there were changes to the tenure evaluation process, and that's kind of what I was speaking to. But all these changes have kind of put a bit more pressure on teachers. And it's important to point out, again, that this is beyond Mawa, this is at the state level. We feel like some of this stuff could have been handled a little bit better at the local level, but overall, these have kind of very much affected the morale and how we view our roles in public education. So, in terms about the local level, and this is kind of coinciding, four of the last six years, we've been working under an inspired contract, including for the last 500 dates, we have been without a new contract. So, this has obviously kind of put a strain on teachers. It certainly affected the level of morale in the schools. And we feel like this shouldn't have gone on as long as it has. It's kind of felt like the new normal of just being without a contract. This is my 10th year in the district, and I've been, the vast majority of those 10 years have been working without a contract. And I wouldn't have expected that in, again, a district that says high quality, high functioning as Mawa. I mean, the last US News and World Report high school rankings throughout the state were 32nd. It's a great, great ranking. And like I told you, the academic success, I mean, it's there. And so, we feel that it's kind of a disconnect between that success, the quality of schools, and kind of how we're being treated. So, that kind of brings us a little bit to where we are now. We went through this state mandated process, reached and passed with the board, reached up to the state mediator, and a part of the process we're at is called fact-finding. And so, essentially, the MAA presents information to the board, I'm sorry, to the neutral third-party fact-finder. The board does the same, presents information, and the fact-finder, you know, presents a report. Both sides have to then either say, yeah, we accept it and we'll settle, or if one side says no, we reject it, we go to the next step in the process. The MAA rejected the offer, and we'll explain why. So, I'm going to hand it over. That's me.
Good, Don. Hello, everyone. Don Hayek, Joyce Kilmer School. Kind of the black and white, just thinking that this is the Wizard of Oz in reverse. So, wow, it's a really close hard seat. There's two main reasons why we couldn't accept the fact-finder's report. I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the first. Hang on to your hats, it's thrilling. We're going to talk about teacher salary guides. And I don't think there's anybody anywhere that's going to debate whether teachers get paid right out of the box their first year what they're worth. Instead, they put us through a salary guide, and hopefully, the point, you know, the point of it is, at the end of the day, you're going to eventually get paid, you know, what you're worth. And you can think of our salary guide, excuse the gum, but I've been talking all day, think of a series of small promotions for, you know, continued education experience. There's two types of promotions, basically. You can get promoted vertically through the salary guide for years of experience, professional development at 20 hours per year, and if you get good evaluations, you make a vertical promotion through the salary guide on your quest to earning your worth. The second type is a horizontal. This requires graduate-level courses beyond the master's, beyond the bachelor's degree. In Mawa, we have a range from bachelor's MA60, which you would consider to be the top salary. We do get tuition reimbursement that covers about two graduate courses per year, and we truly do appreciate that, it's very helpful. But unless we want to clog up the graduate schools with 70 or 80-year-old graduate students, we, we end up accelerating the process and paying for a lot of that out of our pocket. The cost of members in the thousands or even into tens of thousands is not unheard of. So, most teachers move diagonally through the salary guide, as you see with the purple line. In fact, it's, you can't really move strictly vertically. There's a penalty after five years that if you don't find the time or the money to go to, you know, pursue graduate work, that your salary is frozen and you remain there indefinitely. Fact of the matter is, about half of the members will never realize the top salary and get down to the lower right-hand corner of the guide because, for whatever reasons, whether it be time or financial reasons, that you can't get there. So, this is, this is really thrilling, but it's something that you really need to know about because it's very important. It's the cost to basically promote everyone on that salary guide is called an increment cost. Unless you start with a brand-new staff every year, it's going to cost you more the next year to, to pay people. Some districts have increment costs that are as low as 1.9%. Mawa has a very high increment cost. It averages about 2.75% for the three years that we've been trying to settle the contract. So, why do you need to understand what that is? Because it really determines whether or not a teacher's earning potential improves over time, whether it just stays where it is and stagnates, or whether it slips backwards. Because cost of living is constantly marching forward, the last two options really aren't good. You can't stagnate and you can't slip backwards. An increment cost means everything when you're trying to settle a contract and figure out whether it's fair. You can't look at a number like 2.25 and say, that's fair or it's unfair unless you know the increment cost of a district. Our increment cost is very high. Why is it so high? County average, according to the fact-finder, there's 16 steps to the top of the salary guide. Mawa has 21 steps. It's very long. And then, there's a bump at the bottom of our salary guide called supermax, where basically what's happening is money is sort of being held back for a longer period of time, 21 years instead of an average of 16, and then at the end of ours, we get, we get some money down at the end. Other districts have a shorter, smoother climb to the top salary, and Mawa hangs on to the money a little bit longer. There's a fact-finder now acknowledging about our increment cost. So, how does a high increment cost affect the teacher? Again, the salary, sorry, the fact-finder says our cumulative earnings, our career earnings in Mawa are at the lower end of the middle in Bergen County. So, that is quite alarming. Well, Mawa is a high-performing district. I'm kind of thinking that needle would be over on the other end. So, how does the high increment cost affect the Board of Ed? Just common sense tells me if it's not coming to me, it's got to be staying with someone, and that would be the Board of Ed. So, how does the high increment cost factor into negotiations? Board of Eds don't want to be the one with the high settlement. They, they have to justify it somewhere. They're going to be sitting in a room with other administrators comparing the size of their settlements. And they don't want to blow the curve. Nobody wants to admit that I had to give whatever, oh, and everyone else has a lower. And that goes for the public, too. They have to justify it for the public. Why did this town settle for this amount and you gave your teachers this amount? So, the easiest thing for them to do is just to compare our settlement offers to other high-performing districts, but that's like comparing apples to oranges. Unless you know what those increment costs are, what it's going to cost to promote everyone, you can't make that, okay? And worst-case scenario, can you imagine negotiating with someone that doesn't truly understand that? So, what happens if the contract settlement doesn't meet increment? Here's some salaries from Mawa over the course of the last 20 years. Looks like they've risen steadily, which looks like good news. But you take a quick look a little closer, and you look what happened to our starting salary there since 2010 in the 2% cap canyon. We've basically leveled out, okay? And you have to ask yourself, can we still attract the best teachers if our starting salaries have leveled out? We've always had a great reputation here. I've enjoyed my 27 years here immensely. It's a great place to work. But if we let out, you know, this is going to get out. Who are we going to attract? A teacher who's hiring in Mawa this year is earning about 16% less than a teacher that was hired in Ridgewood. That's significant. But the worst news is what's been happening to our salary guide, not in the beginning where they try to protect the starting salary. This is what's been happening over the last five years everywhere else in our guide. The numbers are going down, okay? In 2010, on any particular spot in our salary guide, people were making more money than they are now at that same spot in the salary guide. So, we're shrinking. So, why is this so scary? What makes it so scary is it's not happening in other districts. 2.5%, that, that could be a windfall for other districts. They can grow their guide, they can make their guide more attractive for new employees and whatnot. For us, it doesn't cut the mustard. Our guide continues to shrink. Our career earning potential already, according to the fact-finder, near the lower middle of Bergen County, we're trending downward. How far downward do we want to trend? So, you got to ask yourself, who's going to come here if people start to realize what's happening? I'll tell you something, in the 27 years I've been here, I've never ever heard of anyone leaving Mawa for a district with better working conditions. Never. Not one. This summer alone, my building alone, we lost two excellent teachers to make moves to go to other districts. That's, that's scary, okay? Another thing that scares me is that teachers are taking on second jobs. I know what that was like when I was going through school, my teachers had second jobs, and I got attention from my teachers that reflected that. You want your teachers to be focused on your children, not on their second job. So, because I teach nine-year-olds, okay, I'm going to try to put this in this perspective, what we're trying to do, the teachers are all the monkey, and the bananas up there are a comfortable way of life. We have a car, we have a house, we can raise our children, and we hope to climb through our salary guide over the course of 30 years and achieve this comfort level that all of us in this room want. And it would be nice, over the course of the 30 years, if the price of bananas stayed the same, we would be in really good shape as we climb. But we know it's going to happen, the price of bananas goes up as we're climbing 30 years through our salary guide. So, it's the responsibility, I think, as us, you know, MAA negotiators and the board, to make that ladder longer, to get closer to the goal, so that Mawa still looks like an attractive place to work, and so that people can work here without having to worry about taking on second jobs so they can, you know, pay their bills. This is what's happening in Mawa currently. We're not, the ladder's not staying the same. It's not growing towards our goal, it's sinking in the mud. Our salary numbers are going down, our, our earning potential is going down. So, it's, it's worse than nothing happening. So, there, that sounds like a lot of gloom and doom. There was some promising news from the fact-finder. He recommended increases that are about, were about one quarter of 1% above increment. So, at least, we kind of froze the mud, right? The ladder was sinking in the mud, we froze the mud. Or at least with the fact-finder's recommendation, that would, that's what we did. In fact, with those numbers that he proposed, we'd need about $175 per member, per year of extra additional money. So, you break that into paychecks, you know, you got eight or nine dollars a week, you can go get a taco at Mo's. You might not get the guacamole, but you can get the taco, all right? But at least we froze the ladder. So, how does that stack up to recent settlements? Again, from the fact-finder's report, the average for new settlements is 0.89% over increment cost, and we were offered 0.25%. So, what does the Board of Ed need to do? I think in any salary proposal, they need to acknowledge that the salary guides can't shrink. We can't, we can't be losing ground. We've got to stop comparing offers made to other districts with, you know, lower increment costs. You can't compare our district with an increment cost on average of about 2.75, 2.9 in the worst years to a district that has an increment cost of 1.9. It doesn't work. So, this is going to have to be explained, and I know it's difficult work. So, what do we, what does the MAA want, need to settle this? We never asked for a salary offer that was the average 0.89% over increment. We went in there acknowledging our problem with increment cost, and our very first proposal, what was that, two years ago? Our very first proposal was right around increment cost. In fact, it was almost exactly where the fact-finder came in, okay? It was freeze the mud, give me a taco, all right? That's what we came in with two years ago. So, we proposed salary stagnation because we knew we were hemorrhaging from a much bigger wound, and that's the one that we really wanted to concentrate on. And I'm going to go back to Andy for the, for the big problem, all right?
Yeah. So, clearly, Don's the numbers guy. I'm just going to talk on people in here. Yes, the bigger problem was, was the health benefit contributions. So, this is what I was saying, Chapter 78, the state law that reformed our health benefits and pension mandated these increases over four years. And so, the fact-finder report had recommended those salary increases, but did not recommend any reduction in those health benefit contribution percentages. And the reason really for this, as cited in the report, was that no other districts had really done this. And this seems strange to us because we're like, wait, a number of districts have. But the way the fact-finder report works is that the clock stops when the hearing happens. So, May 2nd was when all this information was gathered. At that point, as the fact-finder pointed out, no districts really had reduced their healthcare contributions. However, since then, Ridgewood, Midland Park, Farallon, Park Ridge, just to name a few comparable districts, all have settled contracts with a reduction in employees' health benefit contributions. So, this for us was the big motivation for rejecting this report, because this is what, as Don pointed out, we've been fighting for. And really, you know, this is why, one, when we are paying ever-increasing healthcare contributions, when healthcare's rising anyway, and our salaries are not going up because of, you know, the way our salary guide is, we've historically negotiated the lower salaries for these great benefits. So, the take-home pay is less and less each year. Some teachers, Liz, what were you?
Was $9,000.
$9,000 over the course of a year.
I was getting $11,000.
$11,000 a year in health benefits. So, that's a big, big jump from, you know, paying nothing to now $11,000 without any real adjustment on our salary side. And so, the positive news of all this is, as I alluded to before, the state recognized that this should be a locally collectively bargained process. And so, there's a sunset clause in the Chapter 78 law that enables locals who have gone through the four-year phase in to now negotiate health benefits. We specifically negotiated a one-year contract deal that ended a year and a half ago or so?
14, 2014.
Yeah, 2014. So that we could take advantage of the sunset clause and negotiate health benefits. And the board knew this. And that's why we're so frustrated that there's been such resistance to really negotiating on this front. These are some other quotes that we pulled out of the fact-finder's report to kind of give you a sense of their perspective, his perspective on the finances of the district. Clearly, the district has the ability to fund the proposed increases in salary and insurance relief that the association has proposed. And these figures show that the district is not in financial hardship and can, can afford the proposed increases. So, again, the money's there, we know it's there. There's a lot of money that's been put away each year in a capital reserve account. We pointed this out at various board meetings, and we felt indicative that the fact-finder cited the ample amount of money and underbudgeing that the board has done over the years. Now, Don kind of talked about this a little bit, but our biggest concern is this combination of kind of, from our perspective, not really being treated as professionals, taking this financial hit year after year, the contentious relationship with the board, this reluctance to negotiate in a meaningful way that would reduce our costs and actually give us some more take-home pay, has resulted in more and more people leaving Mawa. And this is really unheard of. I mean, we're a high-performing district. We shouldn't be losing great teachers. Based on the surveys and research we've done tracking board agendas over the last years, approximately 20% of our staff has left. And they leave for various reasons, but some people have retired early because, you know, they don't want to deal with this climate anymore. Some people have left to go into administration because they feel like they got to make an increase somewhere. Some people have left to pursue, you know, some of those other jobs that they had, other job opportunities. And some people have left for lateral positions, and this is the group that concerns us the most. Don had mentioned two of those teachers in the district. There were nine members last year who left for lateral positions. So, leaving Mawa for just the same exact position in a different district. And that shouldn't happen in a district like this. And so, we see this more and more, and it really concerns us because this is really what affects the quality of the education we provide for your kids. Just last night on the board agenda, we lost at The Ridge another great teacher, another great teacher. She's been there at The Ridge 12 years, something like that. This is a teacher who could have, you know, gone into administration perhaps in Mawa, but did not have that opportunity. And so, she's now going to be leaving in the next month or two. So, we worry about this affecting the quality of schools. And of course, we know that the number one indicator of home value is the quality of schools. And so, it all affects you as residents of Mawa. So, basically, what we're asking of you is that you contact the board. Kim Barron is the president of the Board of Ed. We, as an association, have been attending meetings more and more frequently over the last couple of years. We encourage you to reach out as residents in the town. Obviously, they're used to hearing from us, but it's a lot more effective when it comes from you. People who, you know, I mean, I don't live in Mawa, but people, a few of us who does. But, obviously, as a, as someone who maybe has less of a financial stake in the game, it'd be great for them to hear from you. We've had a number of parents in the last few months write letters to the editor in the suburban, in the record. That's great to see. We've had even more parents, some of you are here, come to board meetings and speak on our behalf. We really, really appreciate it, and that's honestly what this, what's going to get this done. These are the current board members. Should note that we just had a board election, so three of these members opted not to run again and will be off the board come January. Mr. Sal DiRini, Mrs. Curry, and Mr. D'Angelo, and three new board members will be taking their place. Linda Mambertish, Prima Worthi, and one member of our audience there, Mr. Roman Derswitz. How are you? But please reach out to any of these people. So, again, you know, we view this, as teachers, I think, you know, we all know, education is, you know, takes a village. So, it takes parents, you know, community stakeholders, educators, we're all in this together. We feel like we should be on the same page as the board soon, frankly, and it's frustrating that it seems like we're not. So, we'd be happy to take any questions. Next board meeting, by the way, is November 30th. We'll be there, we hope to see you there. And again, we kind of left a big chunk of time to answer any questions you might have or follow up on anything you might be interested in. So, thank you for being here.
Don't be shy.
I, I have a question. The salary guide, who exactly creates that? Is it the administration that creates that salary guide?
Turn it over to you guys.
That was, it was created years and years ago. And what we do when we do settle, you take that money and the, and the board and administration will all kind of look at the money and see where it goes on the salary guide. But that's, it was, it's been... But that's, it was, it's been, it's been there since teachers have been there. And the reason, one of the reasons it's so long is that over the years, steps have been added to decrease the amount that it costs for increment. But, you know, so you're looking at 19 years to get down to the bottom. And, you know, again, some people are not even able to get to the supermax where you will be making more money because there's a clause in our contract that, you know, we'd like to get out saying that if a teacher hasn't been in Maua for 20 years, that they cannot go to supermax. So again, that was negotiated years and years ago.
So the guide cannot be changed, or can it be?
It can be changed with input from both, but we just don't want it to value the guide.
Right.
The question you're asking is how can you change it? It would take money to change the guide. Ironically, the reason for the big bump at the bottom was years ago, people were provided incentives to stay because there was a lot of jumping ship. We're talking way back when, before me. So they created an incentive to stay, which was this big, we used to have a giant salary and that was your incentive to stay. Well, that's pretty much shrunk now to what's pretty average. But we still have that bump down at the bottom, which causes some increment cost problems.
Okay, okay.
They're all looking at you.
This isn't so much a question as kind of the dilemma that I see. I am well beyond the point in my life where I have children in the school system. I am a retired nurse. I was in a union atmosphere. I'm familiar with steps and how that translates into increased salary. I am concerned, as a citizen of New Jersey, that we have now had our 10th bond downgrading and it's directly related to the sad state of affairs of the pension fund in New Jersey. I came from Illinois, and Illinois has the distinction of being below us. With the 2% cap that was agreed to in this state by our governor with the teachers' union, the real problem is the teachers have really gotten, you know, have been taken advantage of because the state is not meeting its obligation to contribute into that pension fund. The health insurance benefit here in Maua seems to be quite generous. The pension contribution, we haven't really discussed. The salary is certainly, you know, we always want more. But I guess what I see is, this has been going on for an awful long time, and it seems like both sides are pretty dug in. It's gotta end at some point. And I guess I, as a citizen, would ask you to consider looking at the health insurance plans. And the plan that most of these teachers take is quite, quite rich. And I think you have to put some, you have to translate that into, yes, you're helping to pay for it, but in private industry, people are paying a lot of money just to have health insurance. And if Maua's health insurance plan is so good, it's a positive. It is a positive, and teachers are getting, still getting a pension, which people in the private industry, that's so god, you know? People don't even know what you're talking about. So to just talk about salary without talking about your good health insurance and your pension, I think is, you know, it's a little misleading. And then the 2% cap is strangling everybody. So there's always so much money, and it's, how's it gonna be carved up? And if you're gonna take a very rich health benefit, something else isn't gonna be able to be...
Yeah, so a couple of things.
So I mean, I think that's just, you know, and the group, both sides have to get off their, you know, their position and come together and let's get this. It's gotta be very demoralizing for everybody, and it's, I mean, you don't strike. I'm a nurse, I went on strike. You should see how things start to move when you go on a strike. Everybody has to start to loosen up a little bit. But this is just going on and on and on and on. It's not healthy for anybody's point of view.
Definitely agree with that last point. So, yeah, a few things. This is what was so frustrating, I think, at the local level about the nature of the Chapter 78 law. The fact that it superseded the collective bargaining process. Because you're absolutely right, you can't talk about salary without talking about health benefits. Frankly, salary, benefits, time, they're all some form of compensation. And so when that piece was kinda taken out, taken off the table, and then we had only these two other things, and we wanted to consider that thing also, but the board was pretending like it didn't exist for four years. You know, you're right, I mean, so historically, we have, and I mentioned this, we have taken lower salaries, teachers, on average, you know, across the board nationally, based on our level of experience in education, make less in salary. And if you add in benefits, make less than people in the private sector of comparable education and experience. So I think that's an important point kinda to consider globally. I didn't mention the pension piece because most of it is state-level. Just to explain that component of the law, it's a seven-year phase-in from 6.5% of our salary being contributed to it to 7.5%. So we're nearly there, we're about 2/3, 3/4 of the way there. So it is an increase, and it was an adjustment at the top in terms of calculating the average of the final five years of our salary as opposed to the average of the final three years of our salary, and some adjustments too. So for me, being here 10 years, my retirement age is 60 as opposed to 55, and teachers who were hired even more recently than me, it's 65. So those were some of the adjustments made with the pension. Frankly, you know, and this is just my opinion, I didn't have as much of an issue with those changes because people work longer or living longer. I think 55 is a little on the young side, so... I won't tell these people. But so that's kind of, you know, why, and that's a state kind of issue. So I completely agree with you, I think. And we've been, you know, advocating for more pension responsibility and, you know, financial stewardship at the state level, and we haven't really seen that from our governor. And that's why, as you pointed out earlier this week, we got another bond rating because of our pension fund. So we're hopeful that the state will start acting responsibly and contribute their fair portion. We haven't been able to take off, you know, payments, and something like 16 out of 20 years, the state wasn't contributing anything to the pension fund. So, yeah, that wasn't on us, and we realized that there have to be some compromises, and that was part of the agreement of the Chapter 78 law.
And more also too, you know, the members contribute. Last year was $1.5, $1.6 million into their healthcare. And, you know, members are paying anywhere from the lowest percent, I think, which is, goes by your salary, which is six, to someone at the top of the guide like myself, after 24 years, paying 35%. So it's...
And I think it's also important to point out, we're not advocating for going back to not paying anything in health benefits. So I think that's kinda speaking to your point about being reasonable about this and seeking common ground. We're not trying to go back to zero like five years ago, six years ago. We're just saying, we can't be in a position where we're taking home less money each year. It's just not sustainable if you expect quality people to stay in this field and in this district specifically. In terms of the quality plans, I mean, I have two very young children. I'm gonna take the best healthcare plan afforded to me. And I would definitely take a lower salary as a result, which is kinda why I became a teacher. It's, the trade-off is a lower salary for great benefits and a great pension. And so for me, and I think I speak for all teachers, no one got into this field with aspirations of making tons and tons of money of living a secure, wealthy lifestyle. But I do expect the deal I was promised 10 years ago. And I think that's what we're fighting for.
And just so you know, with our proposals that we've been doing, just this summer alone, the MEA has offered three different healthcare proposals. So we are trying to negotiate. So it's not, you know, we're standing our ground with healthcare, but we are willing to look at the salary guide and say, okay, even go a little bit less. We just need to stop this bleeding because it's just, people are just losing too much money. But we are looking to do that.
And again, it's not theoretical. We see people leaving, and that's the big concern. Thank you for being here, and thank you for raising the question.
Okay, I have a question. It's related to the evaluations. And this is just from a parent perspective because from the outside looking in, I feel like all these mandates are coming down from the State Department, and I feel like you guys are being buried under paperwork and extraneous stuff with SGOs and all this other stuff. I don't understand all of it, but I think that that is a point also with the park exam and the evaluations and everything that should be addressed with the Board of Ed. And you guys should have an input as to the evaluation process. And I don't know if that's happening behind the scenes.
No, I mean with the evaluation process, it's, you know, it is from the, you know, from the state, but there are some options, like Amy spoke about today, with, you know, somebody who gets a highly effective, to perhaps do something else, maybe an alternative assessment. There were three different options that the state gave, but, you know, there was nothing afforded to us for that group of teachers. But the evaluation process, it is a lot of big work. It's a lot of test scores, and it's a lot of, you know, your evaluation for some staffs based on how children do on a test on one day, so it's...
Now, do you feel like, okay, say, I don't know when this all started, but, you know, 15 years ago versus now, do you feel like it was better the way you were doing things versus now with the way?
Evaluations, you mean?
Yeah.
Personally, I do. I do, because 15 years ago, we had something called an alternative assessment. So teachers could look and meet with their building principals or supervisors, and they could find a best practice or something that they wanted to research. It could've been action research. There were so many options that we had. And that's what the teacher would work on throughout the year, meet with the building principal to go over it, present at the end. There was certainly more teacher input to it, and it was, I feel, better. Yeah, it was definitely more authentic too.
And as far as classroom time, do you feel like, even, even though, well, it seems like they're pushing the level of education down into the lower grades. And I know a lot of kids who feel stressed out, you know, and are like exploding by the end of the day. Do you feel as if, you know, the changes in the last, I can tell you, five years difference between my two children's, you know, there's been a lot of changes. Do you feel like this is something that needs to be addressed by our Board of Education?
Would love it, state? Yeah, I mean, it is state, and it's, look, I would love for the board to take a lead on pushing back against some of these state reforms. You know, I think high-stakes standardized testing has been awful for public education. I think it's led to a narrowing of the curriculum, and I think it's, you know, generally taken autonomy away from the teachers. It's led to less opportunities for creativity. You know, and look, you know, we really try our best to integrate these things. I'm very fortunate that as a social studies teacher, I'm not a tested subject, but in social studies, you know, there's been more and more pressure to kind of teach in line with, in line with JARs and part tests, and before that, NJAs. And so certainly more so at the lower grades, in the tested subjects, there's definitely been, and what I would see is a negative impact. Now, yeah, teachers have spoken out about this. The NJA has testified at the state Board of Ed hearings about the negative effects of part testing in particular, and high-stakes testing in general. And there have been a few boards of ed and superintendents who have done the same. Maua has opted not to. Certainly something that, you know, I would be interested in pursuing and talking about with the Board of Ed. I think there are some sympathetic people to that idea on the board. I think so much of our focus, unfortunately, has been on, you know, just staying afloat with these contract disputes. Hopefully, we can get this behind us and we can start thinking about some of these larger education reform issues.
All right, thanks very much for coming, we appreciate it. And spread the word, this will be online.
Again, the next Board of Ed meeting is November 30th. It'd be great to have as many of you there as possible. Thanks.
Thank you.